All right, welcome to the zoning board meeting for January 26, 2021. I'll do the statement. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, amended for 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, unnoticed regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of that notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and the conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines for virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Can you please call us to order, Mr. Cerfico?
Yes, meetings called to order. Regularly scheduled meeting of the Asbury Park, City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment for January 26, 2021. I'll call the roll. Daniel Harris.
Dan, please unmute yourself.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman.
Here.
How are you, Brittany?
I'm good.
Wendy Glassman.
Here.
Thank you. Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Tim Catherine Minervini.
Yeah.
Bonnie Knox.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Christopher Avaloni.
Here.
All present and accounted for.
Great. All right, so we have two applications tonight. The first of which is 306th Avenue, which was carried from November 10, 2020, without further notice. Or do I, am I under the assumption, was it noticed again?
It had to be noticed.
I was going to get to that when you were finished. I did not want to interrupt you.
Yeah, so go ahead, Mr. Cerfico. Are all the, is it, are we in order?
Yes, I reviewed the notices. They're all in order. We have jurisdiction to continue to proceed. Another housekeeping matter would be, I'd like to speak to Wendy. Ah, look at that. Magic of.
I am.
Okay. Wendy, I understand that you have listened to or observed the tapes or transcripts and so on, TV recordings for May 28, 2019, November 12, 2019, January 28, 2020, and October 13, 2020. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to see if I can get a picture of you signing that or tell me that you're signing it and I will sign, I will witness your signature as you tell me that you signed it.
There it is. I'm signing it now, pen in hand.
Perfect.
Sign.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have a full board. I believe we've got eight members present, if not nine, so any, everyone can participate. But depending upon the amount of people that are here, only seven members will vote if we come to a vote.
Okay. So, Mr. Karas, if you could just give us a little synopsis, it's been a little while again. I'd appreciate it for the board and for myself. Welcome, Mr. Siegel. Welcome back for the, what is this, the fifth time?
The 25th time?
Not quite the 25th. Come on, Peter.
It's nice to be here. Good to see all the faces smiling. Smiling is good these days. I'll take it.
If I may, Andrew Karas, on behalf of the applicant, we're here with your garden property located at 306th Ave, Lot 3606, Lot 5. We're in the R2 zone. We have a substandard sized lot at 3,500 square feet. Just as a reminder of the application, it's a proposal for a two-family dwelling on this lot. We've gone through quite a number of hearings, made a significant amount of revisions to the plans. We are here tonight. I'm going to present two witnesses tonight. Number one, Mike Savaries, our architect. Just to go over some of the revisions that we have made to the plans. And we'll address a number of the comments that are in the planners report that we've received recently and also the engineering report. I'm also going to call Dave Roberts to testify to provide the planning testimony relative to the application to continue with the planning testimony. Both my witnesses already have been qualified as experts. They had been sworn in, so Jack, if you want to re swear them in, I think we can forego qualifying them again.
Who's first?
Mike Savaries.
Okay, Mike, please raise your right hand. Tell him we swear the testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record. Spell it for us. You can put your hand down now. And, and you spell it for us and just tell us your affiliation with the applicant.
Michael Savaries, S-A-V-A-R-E-S-E. I'm the architect for the application and our offices are in Little Silver, New Jersey.
Thank you. May proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Savaries, you're familiar with this application as you've testified previously on and you've also prepared the architectural plans relative to the application, correct?
Yes, I have.
I'm going to have you take a look at what's been previously marked and submitted to the board as a seven for identification. All right, can you screen share that? Can we bring that up on the screen?
Am I doing that or someone else's?
Andy, do you have that article or no?
When you say, are you talking me or AP TV?
AP TV. I'm sorry. You'll be Mr. Karas.
I do not have that, no.
Okay.
All right, if we can screen share it, it's previously been marked and it had been submitted to the board.
Mike Savaries, have it. Can he put it up?
Mike, can you do that?
I don't know what number seven is.
It's, that's a six. A seven is the plans that have been revised on January 12, 2020.
Hold on one second.
No. What's the last revision date? I gotta look at it. November of 2020 is the last revision date. And that's a seven.
Do you see that?
Yeah, that's it. All right. Can we enlarge that just so we can get the date and so you can indicate the date on those plans?
Have all of these been marked?
Yes.
Yeah, this is a seven.
Yeah, I just want you to make reference to the dates so we're all on the same page.
All right, so it's the last data, this is 11, 9, 20.
There we go. And those are the last revisions that you made to these plans. Am I correct?
That is correct.
All right. Why don't we go through the plans and the revisions that were made in response to some of the comments that we had from the board at the last hearing?
Okay, hold on one second.
Can you click on the arrows so they go, so it's like full screen?
I'm trying to get it to be bigger.
Click the X, yeah, the X next to layers. We'll get rid of the stuff on the left.
And then they, yeah.
There you go.
Okay.
And then the arrow down.
Keep, bring your pointer down a little bit to the arrow.
Right there. You have to be loving.
Yeah, just move your pointer to the arrow.
There's an arrow in the, in the, in the others, in the others gray box.
You know what, you guys, your pictures are the, that's one. Got it.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
Thank you.
I'm pointing to it on my screen, but nobody's seeing that.
So, so yeah.
All right.
Mr. Savaries?
Yep. Okay.
All right, why don't we go through the plans and the revisions that you made to the plans?
So do you want to start with the site plan first or just the plans?
Go right through the first page, T100, and we'll work our way through.
Okay, so T100 we're looking at right now, it is showing the fact that we have a trash enclosure to the west of the property off of Sixth Avenue. We actually relocated the stair tower to the building, which is something suggested from the board. And we have a four-car garage, which is two and two, that exit onto web.
So there, where are the curb cuts now, Mr. Savaries?
I, let me look at the survey. I don't know if they're all curb cuts now. I don't believe there is a curb cut right now.
But you've added curb cuts, am I correct?
Added curb cuts.
And where are the curb cuts that were added?
There's a curb cut right, right here. There's a curb, well, the curb, there's a curb cut here, there's a curb cut here, and they're both 16 feet wide.
And those are on web?
Those are all web, correct.
Okay, please continue.
Any other questions about the site plan for now?
Are you asking me? Go on, Mr. Savaries.
Okay, thank you. So that's the, the ground floor level of the building, which is, so is the two car, the two, two-car garages. They both have a double car garage door on the web. The main entry to the building is on Sixth Avenue. The stair tower has been located to the southeast corner. The main entry to the building is aesthetically, it is on Sixth Avenue, logically, it is on web where we show the door going in. That's the stair tower. The garbage enclosure is to the west side of the building and there's a utility room that's accessed off of the front garage. As of now, there is no subdivision between the two garages. It's a common four-car garage. We're not sure if we want to make a division, make it two and two at this point in time.
And the front door is where, located where?
The front, the, the real front door is located on web, but you'll see in a moment that on Sixth Avenue, it appears to be your front door purposely.
So it appears you have two front doors at this point. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay, this is a typical floor plan, so you would come out of the stair tower of an entry. There's a large living space that's 34 by 96. There's a kitchen that is 11, 4 by 10 in the center of the space. There's a bedroom on Sixth and a bedroom in the rear yard. There's a wash and dryer room and a powder room. So it's two beds, one and a half beds.
And that's one unit?
That's one unit.
And what's the square footage of that unit?
That unit is actually 908 square feet plus the tower of the shared common space is 122 square feet.
Okay, go on.
So second floor is basically the same layout. I believe the kitchen is slightly different. But bedroom in the front, bedroom in the back, balcony off the bedrooms, balcony off the living room, balcony of the front entry. The stair tower goes to a rooftop balcony, which has one door. And like I said, that stair tower at that point is 45 square feet.
And that's common space, Mr. Savaries?
That's common space, yes. The rooftop balcony is common space.
Now that, going back to that for a minute, now the stair tower that you have, is there any usable space in there for the residents? Or is it just merely a stair tower to get access to the roof?
It's a stair tower to get access to a roof terrace. So there's no space in the tower at all, but there's basically, as you can see, is this three, three sets runs of stair and a landing.
So the stair tower that goes through is, is to provide access to that roof, am I correct?
That's correct.
And it's been removed from the prior plan that we have away from the adjacent property, correct?
Correct. And the last thing, the condenses for the AC units are located on the, I guess, southern section of the roof.
Okay, is there a parapet or any way to see, that hides the condensers?
Yes, they'll be hidden.
Go on.
So I'm going to take you to this, talk about the Sixth Avenue elevation first. Okay, so that's the, the door that's in the stair tower that really is not a door because it's in front of the steps that go up. And there's the three levels of space.
So it just appears to be a, a door, Mr. Savaries? It doesn't access or there's no way?
It slides, there's no way. I'll show you again on the plan if you like. It appears to be a door.
But it's not a functional door. It's just a fake door.
It's an aesthetic door to give the elevation where we want on Sixth Avenue. So it reads as a door.
I see.
It, I, I guess it can go in, but the, our intention is not to go in there.
So it will never be modified to be a front door?
I don't believe so. I mean, it, it could be, but it just, I don't think it makes sense. If you're coming out of your garage and walking into your space, I think you want to walk in our web, not around the corner.
Isn't it going to be confusing for delivery people? Isn't the address Sixth Avenue and then the door, the operable functional door is actually on web? Is that, am I understanding that right?
I, I've gone in plenty of buildings throughout my career and as a, as a customer, as a tenant, as an owner, as a visitor, where there's two front doors. And it's usually a little sign that says use other drawer. Takes care of it. And if you're delivering there, it's only the first time you're going to be confused.
Excuse me, this is Donna Miller. Can I, Mr. Chair, can I?
First, you need to be sworn in, Donna.
Yeah, I was going to ask a question, but I'll swear in anyway. Let's get both Jason and Donna sworn, please. Please raise your right hands. You saw me swear the testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Okay, please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Jason Fitch, your board engineer.
Thank you. Proceed, Donna.
Thank you. Okay, so it was my understanding from looking at the plan, I thought that was like some sort of pocket style, you know, sliding type feature on that door.
Yes, there is. It could be, it could be used, but I believe the actual use.
Sixth Avenue, it looks like the intent is to have a Sixth Avenue functional facade. I think if the board, if you are going to satisfy the requirement for front-facing doors, it needs to function. If it's not going to function and it's all faux, then I think you're going to have to plead the case for the variance.
Mike, can we make that into a functional door?
Yes, we can.
Excellent.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that'll be a functional door.
All right, so getting back to the description of the project. I believe it's in fitting with the style that the building achieves. It has balconies, it has ins and outs, it has registration that meets the criteria, the code for the correct percentages. It has two front-facing facades, which is typical to a corner building at times. And it's in scale with the adjacent houses on both web and on both Sixth Avenue.
Now, what is the measurements of the building itself? It's around 49 feet by 20?
The footprint?
The footprint.
Footprint is 49, 6 by 20, 26 of it.
Okay, now architecturally, would you ever really want to make a building any thinner or narrower than 20 feet?
20 feet is typical townhouse, if you will, duplex condo. It's a, it's a, a number that's used quite often throughout the whole field of rental apartments, of condo apartments, of just living in general. Usually 20 by 40, 20 by 50 is its typical base plan footprint.
Of even a single-family house, am I correct?
You're correct.
So irrespective whether it's a one or a two family, you would have the same footprint as what you see here, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, go on.
So just to clarify, Mr. Savaries, each of these apartments or condos or whatever they may be are exactly the same square footage?
Yes.
Okay. And you said they were what, 900?
908 square, 8, 908 square feet.
Okay. Please go on.
So then you go up to the third floor of, actually, we went up to it already, third floor has a rooftop terrace. And the back of the building.
Well, when you say the third floor, you have the first floor, the bottom floor, the ground floors where you have the garage and the entrance into the building, correct?
Correct.
And then the two floors above are your two units, correct?
Correct.
And then you go up to the roof, am I correct?
Correct. It's, I shouldn't call it a floor, it's a rooftop terrace, so that you have a bulkhead of the terrace that lets you out onto the roof.
Okay, and what are the heights that we're looking at, at the building, on the building?
All right, guys, bear with me. The height is 30 feet. The first floor is eight, second floor is nine. Where the, I should say lower level is eight, where the garage is and the entry is. The first living level is nine, the second living level is nine. And the railing parapet is three feet and it's nine feet to the top of the stair tower.
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, can we get something straight? Is it ground floor, first floor? What is the proper terminology? Is it, is it ground floor then first and second or is it first floor?
It's, it's ground floor, entry and garage. There is no living space on the ground floor and then it's first and second.
Okay, thank you, because sometimes you said lower level, sometimes you said ground, so I just wanted to.
Well, it, it's required not to have any living, livable space due to the flood hazard.
That's correct.
I just want to make sure what we're calling the ground floor. Thanks.
And Mike, that led into the next question I was going to have for you. And the reason that you have the living space on the second and third is because of the flood hazard, am I correct?
That is correct.
All right, why don't you explain that?
So this site sits at, I believe, 10 feet. So you, the BFE makes, makes living space can't be any less than 11 feet.
When you say BFE, you're talking about base flood elevation, am I correct?
You are correct.
All right, continue.
So in order to make this project work for us and have the amenity of an enclosed parking garage, we felt it was best to leave the lower level or ground floor level just above the BFE and have no living space on it, so we have the garage space we need and the entry platform to get into the stair tower. All living is from this, the first floor up.
Any other revisions that you made aside from that, to which you've already testified?
We slightly shifted windows, slightly shifted sizes of balconies. We took in, I think we made some balconies actually a little bit smaller, which was at some of the comments we heard from the board.
Okay. Any other revisions?
Uh, not that I'm worried, it's, it's actually, you know, we transferred a lot, going from a center entry on web to a corner entry on Sixth and Web.
All right. You've had a chance to review the reports that were generated in this matter by the board's professionals, am I correct?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to take you first to the engineering report that's dated January 15 of 2021.
Okay.
And this is a board's report. Jack, do we want to mark this report?
You're going to testify from it. Let's make it B1. I don't think we have any other submissions on our end.
Okay. Take a look at what's been marked as B1 for identification, which is the insight report dated January 15, 2021. You had a chance to review that, am I correct?
Yes, I have.
Okay, what I'm going to do, just go through a number of the comments, just so we address everything that's in the report. I'm going to bring your attention first to page two under considerations. Okay. On number one.
Just, just one second, Mr. Karas.
Sure.
I just want to ask Jason, in your report, you have listed two curb cuts are proposed for one driveway from Sixth Avenue. I believe that statement's incorrect.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we talked about that at the last meeting. I apologize, that was a typo.
Okay. So it wasn't revised for the new report then?
It, it was. That, that slipped through the cracks somehow.
Okay.
Jason, that's unusual.
You know, there's a blind squirrel eating a nut right now, I guess.
All right, go into considerations on page two, number one. See contestant regarding how the use will be served by the utilities. Will new connections be required? Will new sanitary connection, utility extension? All that is yes, seeing it's a vacant lot right now.
Correct. As far as I know, it's a vacant lot. Last I was out there, it was vacant and per the survey that we referred to on our drawing, it's a vacant lot.
With regard to number two, utility connections are not shown on the plans. They will be part in the event that there is an approval, keep in mind it's not a site plan that we're here for. In the event there is an approval, they will be part of the construction drawing submitted for engineering review.
Yes, they will.
And similarly, with regard to the road opening permit, that will be secured before utilities
Yes.
are put in there. Number three, pavement repairs, no issues with that. They will be added to the plans in the event the application is approved. Similar to number four, those details will be provided in the event an application is approved, the application is approved. Number five, Mike, can you address with regard to the DEP requirements, I believe you already did, on the continuing comment with regard to the base elevation of 10?
Right, so we set the stair tower at 10.6, knowing it was not going to be a living space. If the, if what Jason's getting at here, do you want the stair tower set at 11? We can do that. It's not, doesn't cause any grief to the project.
Okay. Continuing on to number six.
I'm sorry, Mr. Karas, can I just jump in right there?
Oh, sure.
Since we're in a flood hazard area, I think we talked about this at a previous hearing. You guys agree that you're going to be getting a flood hazard permit from the DEP? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Number six, there's continuing comment with regard to stormwater management. We had some engineering calculations done, it was presented to the board engineer. And we have no issue with, and I believe the board engineers are in agreement to do a perforated pipe as opposed to dry well. Jason, am I correct with that?
Yeah, any, any sort of subgrade structure to collect the water and put it into the ground. The main objective is to, is to collect the runoff that's in excess of the allowable impervious coverage and put it into the ground.
And which we've agreed to do. No issues with that.
Okay, thank you.
Continuing on, number eight, we have the two driveways on web, you have it on there, 16 feet wide. Construction details will be provided in the event of approval. Same with regard to number nine. Number 10, sanitary sewer connection fees, of course, that'll be done in the event there's an approval. We'll be in touch with the engineer to make that determination of what those are. Number 11, with regard to the overflow discharge, no issues with what's in there?
If I can just get some clarification on that. You would provide a grading plan? Is, is that what you're agreeing to?
Yeah, we'll provide that, no issue.
All right, great, thanks.
13, there is no 12, 13 is just revised, indicated zoning board, no issue with that. Screening for the refuse area, exterior mechanical equipment, gas and electric meters. Mike, we've gone over that on the plans, am I correct?
It's probably a miss. We actually have actual enclosure for it, so it is screened on the side of the building.
Okay, and with regard to the mechanical equipment on the roof?
And they're actually, they're on the roof too. I think that's a miss from an old note.
And there, the interior room provides for the gas and electric meters, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Number 15, exterior lighting, can you address that?
We have lighting on the faces of the building. We have an LED light. We do not have a photometrics chart, but on our final submission, we will have that information for you. Right now, the decorative lights on either sides of doors and garage doors and entry doors and sliding doors.
Typical residential won't spill onto any neighboring properties, am I correct?
That's correct.
If I may, just jump in here for a second, pardon the interruption. Mike, you said you were going to submit photometrics subsequent to now?
Yes, when the, when the full lighting package is done, we'll make sure that's in there.
Okay.
Attention upon the approvals.
Jason, you have that for resolution compliance conditions?
Yeah, I just made a note that they're going to provide photometrics, so that's, that's easy enough to check.
Donna, you got that too as well? Thank you.
With regard to the other approves we'll obtain with With regard to the other approves, we'll obtain whatever necessary approvals are required for the project in the event the application is approved. Next, I'm going to go to the planning report that was done dated January sixteen, twenty twenty one. And Jack, do we want to mark that as B two?
Sure, why not?
Okay. Most of this is going to be testified to by our planner with regard to variance relief that's being sought. The one thing that I do want to bring to our architects' attention, if we go to page four fourteen, F, building height.
Hold on a sec. Okay.
There's the comment in there, the proposed building will have four stories and a height of thirty nine feet to the top of the penthouse roof. The penthouse roof, that's just really the stair tower, am I correct?
That is correct.
The top of the building, absent the stair tower, the surface of the roof is at thirty feet, am I correct?
That is correct. As you can see, there I believe that the renderings are up. You can see that? So that's.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we bring the rendering back up? Which is A six for identification.
Yeah, try to get it back up. Hold on one minute. Okay.
All right, that's the rendering that you prepared that previously was marked as A six for identification, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, why don't you go through to identify where that stair tower is and the different floors of the building?
So the stair tower is in the corner of Web and Sixth. As we look through the floors, the first lower level is eight feet.
Ground floor.
The ground floor, lower level, the first floor is nine feet. Uh, the second floor is nine feet. So this roof level is thirty feet. And then there's a nine foot tower that leads on to the depth level.
Okay, so when we, in terms of the comment, four stories, it's really three stories that we're talking about with the stair tower that goes up, that in a sense uh, comprised that fourth story, that stair tower, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the remaining comments will be addressed by our planner. Are there any questions from the board?
So what, how much uh, of F A R is being used up by this site now at this point, Mr. Savaries?
Give me a moment. I haven't looked at that number lately. We are using thirty six point nine percent of the site.
Is that building coverage or is that, what's the F A R?
This is building coverage and balcony. So it's a hundred, the building footprint is a thousand twenty six. The balconies are two sixty six. So the total is twelve ninety two. It's going to have a thirty six point nine percent.
And that's, what about F A R? That's building coverage. We have an F A R component on there, don't we?
It's thirty four point seven nine. I don't have an F A R number here.
You'd, yeah, you do. It's point six six five.
I'm sorry?
Point six six five on your zoning comparison table.
And and the requirement is point five, is that correct?
Mr. Savaries, let me ask you this. The size of the building, whether it's a one story or a two story, would it be the same, or I'm sorry, one family or two family? Would the building size essentially be the same?
Yes, because anybody that I feel is going to build a one family home here is going to build a two story home. They're going to build it above the floodplain and they're going to get that typical common size, twenty by forty, twenty by fifty, we're going to build this home at, which is around twenty five hundred, twenty five hundred square feet. I can't see anybody building a home in this day and age, in this area, less than twenty five hundred square feet. Probably attempt to build it for more.
And each one of these units, as you testified to, the livable space is actually just under a thousand square feet, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, so am I correct? The the footprint of the building is about a thousand square feet?
Yes.
So the the F A, the livable area is around two thousand square feet, correct?
Correct.
And if you were to do a one family, um, typically, are you going to build a one family less than two thousand square feet?
I wouldn't. I don't think, yeah, I mean, I I would imagine.
I appreciate your points, Mr. Karas, but you you're trying to make us believe that you cannot build a one family house on this site. So I I I question.
You can, but it's going to be the same square footage. That's the point. No, I mean, no matter if it's a one family or a two family, it's going to be the same square footage because typically you're not going to build a one family house less than two thousand square feet.
Yes, but you're not going to build a one family. This is Russell Lewis. You're not going to build a one family house with a four car garage on the first floor, essentially lifting the entire structure up a story.
You would have to lift it up because that's your flood elevation.
This is Donna. He only have to lift it up a foot, not a whole story.
I don't buy that argument, but I understand why you would want to put it out there, but I don't buy that argument.
And I questioned it myself, Mr. Karas. So let's go on.
Any other questions?
Anyone else from the board have any further questions for Mr. Savaries?
I have a quick question about the windows on the stair, um, the stair tower, are those windows?
Yes.
And are they clear? Or frosted?
They we haven't determined yet. I we're still looking at whether you want them clear or not.
Okay, so if they were clear, you would see the staircase going up, correct?
Yes, you would.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
And also what we're proposing for the garage doors is a clear door also. That could be frosted. Just a light to give this street presence a very light feeling. As you can see, the cars through the garage doors in the rendering.
Do you have any further questions, Kitty?
No, that's it.
Anyone else from the board?
Yeah, this is Brittany. Um, I had a question about the roof. Um, what was the reasoning behind such a large roof and the balcony too?
Well, it's not a, it's only a small percentage of the building is the roof terrace. So the roof terrace is only about, I'll give you the actual number. Of course, too. It's about twenty by twenty, twenty one by twenty one with the corner taken out of it. So it's around four hundred square feet. The rest of the roof is this plain roof that you don't know, there's no access to.
So what is going to be up there?
Well, as testified previously, there's going to be two or three condensing units.
No, in the the common space.
Nothing. A railing is a place for people to sit or to walk or be outside.
And you're not going to provide any furniture or anything up there? The common space, correct?
It's common space. I would imagine the people might bring furniture up there, but I don't believe the laws of the building will allow them to keep it up there unattended. That's not for me to decide.
And does the building need to be that tall? It seems like, I know it's the.
The buil- the building is not that tall. We have nine foot ceilings, which is not uncommon in today's marketplace.
I'm talking about the the top floor.
It's not a floor, it's stair tower. It's an element that brings a corner to this building. It's an entry. Can we bring it down another foot possibly, but we think it's a nice ornamental cap on the top of this art deco building.
Okay, um. My second question, so since you are in the flood zone, what if it floods in that garage? Is that going to keep the doors from opening or?
No.
Well, let me finish, please. Are you designing it so it is it floodproofed or are you allowing water to come in? As Donna mentioned in her report, there are things like flood vents that you can put in there. So if water does come in, it goes back out. Have you designed any kind of mitigation against flooding?
Yes, they will be fully compliant. They will have flood vents in the side and rear rear walls of the building.
Yeah, you don't want to design it where water can't get in because then you create static pressure and that's what causes buildings to collapse. That's why you have flood vents.
Actually, you can.
What's that? But you don't want, the DEP normally requires and they want flood vents.
That's not true. Actually, this is my profession and you do a lot of times there's historic buildings that you can't let water in. So there's such thing as dry and wet floodproofing.
Well, i- is our intention here is a garage space that flood vents adequately spaced every for every two hundred square feet of space, we'll have the correct size flood vent.
Are they identified on the plan?
No, they're not, but there's a note in the plan saying that we will comply with the latest regulations. And then out of the plan, we haven't decided what they look like. We haven't decided if we want to put them inside the garage door or not. We want to make one big one in the rear of the building or or two big ones. We could do it with multiple small ones. We haven't got to that point yet.
I want to ask Donna a question since she's C F M. Um, Donna, is that something that's required by DEP? For those floodgates, flood vents, or is that something that is just up to the the builder?
It's all.
I missed that? Donna, we lost it.
I'll jump in if she's having trouble.
Excuse me.
Donna, you there?
I can hear you. Now I can't.
Want to take a stab?
It looks like we've lost Donna.
We lost her.
Good. I'll text her and let her know. Sure she does, but we'll get her anyway.
While we're waiting, I I'll I'll throw in a comment, Brittany, to uh address your question. Uh, one of the comments that we made that the applicant agreed to is to provide a grading plan. Uh, as of now, so far as I've seen, we haven't been provided any topo. So we need to be able to evaluate the topography of the lot versus the base flood elevation. From the testimony, it sounds like the garage floor is going to be above the base flood elevation, in which case no flood vents would be required. If the garage floor is below the base flood elevation, which technically it's permitted to be, uh, they'd they'd have to provide vents. They'd have to do wet or dry, I believe for residential construction, it has to be wet. Um, but yeah, they would have to comply with that.
But first you would need the grading, correct, Jason?
Yeah, we need to know if the garage floor is above or below. We're, I'm hearing the testimony, but we need to have the uh, topographic survey.
Right.
Proposed grading plan so we can evaluate exactly what we're dealing with.
And why isn't there a grading plan done already?
It's not a site plan.
So our comment, uh, when it comes to a grading plan and the drainage, Brittany, uh, is is more related to the fact that, um, they're over on building coverage. They have an undersized lot. They're over on building coverage. It's tight. Um, so what we're doing is talking about managing the additional runoff from the from the overage of co- uh, additional impervious coverage. Uh, but also, since it's so tight, we want to ensure that that runoff is not directed to neighbors. We want to get it out to the street. So through that process, we'll be, and and by the way, they're in a flood zone, so they have to get a flood hazard permit from the DEP, which is going to require require them to get topography anyway. So when we get all that information in, we'll be able to evaluate the garage floor versus the base flood and all the requirements to go with it.
Yeah, I I heard that they are revising the downspout. Um, is that something that you are okay with that? I mean, I know there's more that needs to be done regarding the grading plan, but is that something that you're comfortable with? So the neighbors aren't getting all the runoff?
Right, that's part of the grading plan that we're asking for. We want to make sure that the roof runoff isn't isn't directed out to the neighbors. It's directed out to the street, uh, which I believe they've agreed to do. So we will, that's an easy one to keep an eye on in.
That is correct.
Compliance process.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, I texted Donna and she said she'll be back shortly. She got bumped somehow. She's working on it.
Are these condo buildings or condo units?
The antennas are apartments.
I'm sorry?
Apartments.
Apartments?
Well, can I?
Peter?
So the truth is.
You're not under oath.
Let's swear in it.
Okay.
Wait, I I don't want to swear in another person, Jack. We have to stick with the.
Yeah, yeah, let's let's get to, we'll get to that question later.
Yes.
Hey, it's Donna. Can everybody see and hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
I I heard most of that conversation, I think, uh, are we okay now? On the flood flood vents?
Brittany, are you okay with the the answers?
Yes, um, yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. So do we have any further questions for Mr. Savaries from the board? Any further questions from the board professionals?
None for me.
None for me, thank you.
Donna, are you good?
Sorry, I passed. I'm good.
Okay, so we'll have to open it up now to uh, the public to question Mr. Savaries. Andy, can we call the first public attendee? And do we have anybody with raised hands?
First to go would be phone number ending in three five zero.
Please state your name and address.
Harris Magnoli, four hundred Deal Lake Drive, apartment five D, Asbury Park, New Jersey.
Please proceed, Mr. Magnoli, with your questions for Mr. Savaries.
Uh, Mr. Savaries, you you're describing the building as an art deco building?
Yes, I did.
Okay, is that pretty typical of that corner in that block?
It's similar to buildings on web. I believe the planner will give testimony when he goes through the next report, but yes.
Okay, so, uh, uh, the the, when you talked about the functional front and the, now you're going to have two doorways that work. So what will be the actual front entrance, like where? Uh, I don't know, it's the legal front entrance. Is it's going to be on web? I mean, where does the mailman go and where are the mailboxes?
We agreed to revise it to put it on Sixth.
It's going to be on Sixth?
Correct.
So for the two apartments that, the two apartments that live there, they're going to have a Sixth Avenue address.
I believe so, but that's for the post office to determine.
Okay, so, uh, you you talked about a web. I mean, web is a in a flood zone, the street. Uh, it floods and, um, you're talking about covering an undersized lot with a thirty plus foot structure. Uh, with a first level is four car garage. But you're going to need to cut two, I don't know, you're cutting one sixteen foot curb out for two driveways? Or is there a little space in between?
There's two sixteen foot curb cuts.
I'm sorry, sir?
There are two sixteen foot curb cuts as shown on the plan.
Okay, there's two curb cuts. The equivalent of two or they're two distinct curb cuts?
Two distinct curb cuts.
Okay, so there's a a little median in the be in between the two?
That's what the plan shows.
Okay, just asking. Uh, so, uh, there's no curb cut on Sixth, correct?
There's a walkway on Sixth, no curb cut, probably a depressed section of eighty eight accessibility.
Okay, I guess it would seem like maybe at one time there was a house on that property, but it didn't have a a curb cut on Sixth Avenue. Does that seem correct?
Objection, speculation, you can't testify to that.
Agreed, sustained. Agreed, sustained.
Okay, okay, all right, easy, easy. So, in other words, you you you're going to be, um, asking uh, for approval for this. And you're going to be removing from the city two parking spaces on a one-way street, very narrow, in a very, very dense area to put a three-story on property, parking, two curb cut, art deco, building with a rooftop deck that is going to cover on an undersized lot. About, did did you say about, uh, what percentage of the lot is the building and the overhang of the, uh, balconies? What was the total? It comes out to about seventy foot you're covering? Seventy percent?
No.
The lot's thirty-five hundred square feet, correct?
That's correct.
And and the building footprint, I don't know if it's it's customary to count the overhang of the balconies, but let's just say the building itself, the footprint on on the property. How much of the thirty-five hundred square feet will be building? I know you said it's tight. I was just wondering.
I did not say it was tight. I said it was thirty-four percent compared to twenty-five percent.
There you go.
Regardless of your parking spaces, let's step back a moment. If we had a parking garage or entry on Sixth Avenue, it would still be missing a parking space. So you're only losing, if you want to call losing a space, it's only taking one space away. They have to have a driveway in this building one way or another.
Uh, that I would know. I would I would just assume there was a one family that had street parking. And I don't know what it means to the city when you tear that house down. It's a vacant lot. And then you want to make it a
commentary as opposed to a question.
It's not commentary. I'm I'm asking a question. I mean, what's customary? I mean, obviously something was there that never.
What's your question?
My question is, was there a house there with no driveway?
Mike, if you know, do you know what was there before?
I have no idea. I've known this property for about three years. And I'm looking at it right now. There was no house there. I'm sure.
Not relevant. Please move on, Mr. Magnoli.
Okay, it is relevant, but you could name it whatever you want. So the point is, uh, gonna lose two city parking spaces in an area.
I disagree, one.
Well, there are none now. So if you're going to make two, how does that equal one?
Because if you had a house there that you claim there must have been a house there before, there was most likely.
Well, you can't because the chairman said that that's not relevant. So we're not allowed to know what was there before, but obviously there was something there. And there's a good chance it was a one-family home.
Let's not go there. Ask your question, please.
Okay. So, what what would be the objection to be to putting a a good-sized one-family? And then asking for one curb cut on six? Okay, all right. Uh, were there any, uh, uh, flood overflow studies of the now which will be impermeable? Uh, cu- coverage, you you mentioned drainage pipes into the ground. Are they just, where are they going? Like, are they going to the sewer or?
Into the ground.
We will let you know. Right now they're going, obviously going into the ground. They're staying on site, but I do not know where they're going yet. We'll soon find out, hopefully.
Hopefully we'll find out.
Hopefully we get approved.
Oh, that, in other words, you would you would have to declare that after the approval.
Subject to.
Subject to, oh. So at some point prior to getting an approval, you're going to have to explain where that runoff.
We've already provided and discussed it with the engineer. We're going to provide either perforated pipe or we're going to do a dry well if at some point that is deemed necessary, which will handle stormwater. Um, which the board engineer has agreed satisfies, uh, the engineer's requirements.
Okay. Uh, and I think you have, along the way, we're describing the building as, uh, two units. And I think at some point now it's declared that they're going to be rental units, correct?
No, for me to say.
No, I understand. I understand. Okay. Want for you to say. And then, of course, uh, you did say the rooftop deck is going to be four hundred square feet. And it's for transient use of the two units where they go up, they bring whatever, and then they take it with them. Well, w- will it have, uh, railings around it? And I mean, I guess it has.
As shown in the rendering of the plan, yes, it has railings. As shown in the rendering that's on the screen and the plan is circulated, it has it has railings.
Okay. And and this kind of building doesn't require any kind of fire exits or fire escapes or anything, does it?
This building complies with the fire code.
I don't think this qualifies as a two-family home.
Ask your questions to the witness. Stop, stop.
Is this a two-family home?
I don't know what the owner's going to qualify it as. All I can tell you is the bedrooms of legal E R S for fire per the code of New Jersey.
Uh, and to me, it's a two-unit apartment building, but and I would think that something like that would have to have fire escape, but you're saying that you're going to put it in as a two-family home?
Thank you.
Okay. Does it require a fire escape?
No, it does not.
Objection, he's already testified as to the requirements.
Okay, okay. And, uh, in terms of setbacks, uh, that, I know that street very well. I know that corner very well. Uh, most, most of the things there are kind of set back uh, quite a distance, so it allows the 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 breeze to come from the ocean and people to sit on their porches, et cetera. Does this encroach on the people's, uh, I don't know what they call that, that twenty-five foot setback that's typical of that area? But does, does it? How far, how far back from the curb, not the curb, the sidewalk? Is the building?
I can't answer that question. I can tell you that it's.
On sixth, on sixth.
On on sixth from the property line is twenty-five feet back.
To the building wall, correct?
Correct. And it matches the adjacent buildings. So, um, it is, it's not, it's actually giving people more view than less view.
Okay, so on sixth, it's got that twenty-five foot setback, which is typical of that area. And then I I just have another question. That's, is that design and architecturally protected or considered a historic zone or it's in the redevelopment zone? It doesn't come in as historic?
There are community standards that do apply.
Okay, there are. And and somehow from, can can you go from historic?
We'll have our planner testify as to the community standards and whether or not this design, uh, is required to meet those.
You mean the next witness?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So, uh, my last question is, was there any, uh, logistical study in terms of, um, web street in terms of navigating the residents, which could have four cars without guests? Was there any? Wouldn't there have to be when you cut curbs, some kind of, uh?
No.
I thought I was asking the expert.
But you're asking whether or not there has to be a study. No, it's not a site plan application.
Okay, because I I know, everybody I know that's requested to cut curbs in Asbury has had to, uh, come up with some kind of, I don't know what they call it, an R T W. Okay, you don't have to get a, uh, a right, uh, whatever it's called, an R T W for a two for two curb cuts? Kind of a yes or no, and then I'm finished. Not great?
What's an R T W?
I I thought it's when you cut a curb, like on Grand Avenue, if you put a a house that doesn't have a driveway and you want to put in a driveway and it's approved, you have to get some kind of engineering study to show the impact of that car or those cars pulling out on a street. What impact does it have? If you look at web, if somebody decides.
No, 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 you're testifying.
Well, I'm asking.
You're you're making statements of things.
Is there any, is there any logistical study that's required? If you're approved of relieving the city of two parking spaces on a narrow street in flood zone on web, that the use of that i- is compatible. I mean, it could be times where it snows. What is your testimony that you don't need any study? You just need an approval.
There is no stud, there's no obligation of a study.
Okay, thank you. Finished.
Andy, please call the next public question.
Chairman, before we do that, uh, I think we need clarification. There's some miscommunication. The setback is twenty-one feet.
Twenty-one to the balcony, well, twenty-five to the face of the building.
Okay, and this other, because technically web is a front as well, the corner, correct?
Yeah, he was asked, he was asking on steps. Mike, do you want to go through the setbacks on web?
Uh, yes. He was asking on six and incorrect. It's twenty-five to the building and twenty-one to the balcony, the four-foot balcony. And on sixth, it is eight feet to the balcony. I'm sorry, I got small plans. I'm reading.
That would be web, correct?
Yep. Eight feet.
To the building or to the balcony?
To the building and four feet to the balcony.
Four feet to the balcony, the same.
Thank you.
Mike, are those setbacks, um, cons, are they consistent with the prevailing setbacks in the buildings? The face of the buildings on the streets?
Andy, wouldn't that be a better question for Dave Roberts?
Yes, I'll save that.
Okay, and also let me say that the four feet is not to the sidewalk. There's still a good seven, eight, another eight feet to the curb. On web.
Thank you, Mr. Severies. Uh, Andy, please call the next person.
And we have a city historian next.
Mr. Baumgartner, please state your name and address.
All right, Mr. Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue, Asbury Park. How are you?
Good, how are you?
You're well, thank you. I have a procedural question, if I may, right off the bat. Um, this witness is presented as the architect, correct?
Correct.
Okay, are we going to have his testimony regarding the document, uh, provided by C C H? By Donna regarding the architectural elements? It would seem the architect would be, uh, talking about the architectural document.
Now, we're going to have our planner because we're asking for variance relief on that. Um, the planner is going to address that.
Planner qualified as an architect?
He's not testifying as the architect. He's testifying as to the community standards. And whether and why we're not doing a, uh, a type of Victorian house on this. That we're doing art deco. We've gone, we've gone through the design of the house before, the art deco nature of it. But we're requesting variance relief from the community design standards.
Standards or architectural standards, are they not?
They are, but we're going to have our planner testify as to why we're not doing or why the community standards really don't apply here. We're not, we're not offering architectural testimony that we're meeting the community design standards. So there's no reason to present arch, any more architectural testimony relative to those standards. We're going to present planning testimony as to whether or not they in fact apply to this site or why they shouldn't apply to this site.
Okay. Uh, for for a legal read on that, you have, you have an architect who's sworn in. That has architectural references with architectural design.
Warner, do you have questions or are you going to argue procedurally with us?
I'm asking about your procedure. That's exactly.
I'm going to give you an answer. The answer is they can proceed in the way that they're proceeding. The architect designed the building. The they're they're requesting variances or they believe there are no variances or design exceptions uh, required, and that's the province of the planner to give us their opinion on that.
And how legally can a planner testify about architectural elements?
He's not going to testify to the architectural elements that are in the building, the the actual architecture itself. He's going to testify as to why he believes that the design standards do not apply. And if they do, they're asking for a variance and he's going to justify the variance. That's perfectly acceptable.
This, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest you, uh, analyze this in your mind a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Warner. Do you have any other questions for Mr. Severies?
Just the main one of why an architect would not address the architectural considerations being presented by your professionals.
Next.
Okay. Andy, please call the next public questioner.
Next up, we have, uh, Maria.
Please state your name and address. Ms. Peretti, are you there?
I'm muted. Hello? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Maria Peretti. I live at three oh five Sixth Avenue. I'm directly across the street. And I have, uh, I have a few questions. Uh, first of all, in two thousand and nineteen, the maximum height started, the maximum height, the proposed maximum height was at thirty-six feet, ten inches, and in two thousand twenty-one, we are now at thirty-nine feet. Which I guess that would be the addition of the tower. Why is there a tower necessary for this?
Mike, you're, you're, Mr. Severies, you're muted.
Mike, you're muted.
Yeah, I got it. Wrong button. Um, there's a tower on this building to access what we think is a very fine amending that is building, which is a rooftop terrace. There's also a tower to complete the architectural corners building to make the corner has significance to the design of this building. It is a very small tower. It is aesthetically pleasing. And it's not, doesn't have much bulk at all, as you were able to see from the renderings.
Thank you. I do appreciate the design of the, um, two-family. It's very nice architecturally. However, I don't think that it fits in this block. I think it's too modest.
Excuse me for the interruption. You have to ask questions. You can't offer an opinion now.
I have, I have questions.
Okay.
How many total rentals will there be?
There's two apartments, two, there are two two-bedroom apartments.
So total rentals would be, okay. And, all right, and, um, how much taller will this new construction be? Than the house next door, which is the yellow house right next door to it? How much taller will it be?
Uh, significantly, most, at the thirty-foot level, it's it's probably shorter than the house next door. The tower is going to be somewhat taller. I did not fully measure the building next door, but I'd say it's probably about two to three feet taller than the peak of the house next door.
The house next door is two and a half stories high and you're proposing four stories. So how can it be?
It's not four stories, it's three stories. And the heights of this building are only eight feet on the first floor, nine feet on the second floor and nine feet. I'm sorry, eight feet at the ground level, nine feet on the first floor and nine feet on the second floor.
Okay, so you.
The house that's two and a half stories has, and it has, some side would have eight or nine, nine and nine. And it has a gabled roof and a gabled roof could be as high as twelve. So that's why I'm saying it's not much taller. It's actually shorter at the roof level. It's actually shorter at the roof level than the building next door. Because it's a flat roof.
So when you, when you're including the total height of the structure at thirty-nine feet. Are you including the additional foot? That it needs to be on top of because of the FEMA requirements, is it?
Yes, we are.
So thirty-nine feet includes the one foot.
Thirty-nine feet, I don't know if it's screen in front of you, is the top of the tower. This basic building is at thirty feet. Only one small corner that is at thirty-nine feet. And it's both an architectural aesthetic element and a direct access to the roof.
It's beautiful. Um, I just don't think it belongs on this block. But anyway. Um, I just wanted to, the people to, on this panel here, to be aware that there is a sewer.
Objection.
Okay, Ms. Peretti, you're, you're, you're testifying. You could only ask questions to Mr. Severies right now. But you'll get your chance to comment at the end.
Okay, let me see if I have any more uh direct questions. Hold on. How long is the construction going to take?
That's.
It's a relevant question.
Irrelevant? I mean, one year?
And, and it doesn't pertain to his direct testimony.
I have nothing to do with that length.
Oh, okay.
During this, well.
When do you anticipate to start construction if you get the approval?
Objection again.
A, a, a sustained. Ms. Peretti, that's not part of his testimony.
Okay, all right. I thought it was questions for everybody and not just Mr. Severies.
No, just for the person who testified, which was Mr. Severies.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
All right, thank you. Andy, do we have anybody else in the public to ask any further questions of Mr. Severies?
No further questions at this time.
All right, so we'll close. Public session right now. Mr. Karas, back to you.
I have my next witness, Dave Roberts. Dave, you there?
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Uh, first, we have to have you sworn in, Mr. Roberts.
Please raise your right hand, Dave, with your solemn testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Okay, and uh, please. State your name for the record, spell it, and tell us uh what you do.
Sure, uh, the name is David G. Roberts. Uh, the last name is spelled R O B E R T S. Uh, the address for DG Roberts Planning and Design LLC is thirty-seven Bayview Avenue in Bayville, New Jersey.
And you are still a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, it'll be uh forty-one years on June first.
My goodness, congratulations, Mr. Roberts.
He's previously qualified and stated his credentials and testified before.
We accept his long-term credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dave Roberts, you're familiar with this property and the application that was presented before the board, am I correct?
Yes, as I had previously testified in this manner, or in this matter, on the property itself, the background of it. Um, I think I might have referenced the fact that I lived around the corner, uh, three-twenty Sunset Avenue for ten years when I was the city planner. For the city between nineteen eighty-five and nineteen ninety-five, and I can. Uh, I anecdotally indicate that that lot was vacant then. Uh, but yes, I'm familiar with the lot, the neighborhood, uh, the city ordinances, et cetera.
What I'd like you to do is go through your planning testimony relative to this site. Now, I do note that previously we had marked this A nine for identification, a report that you have prepared for this application. Am I correct?
That's correct. That was a PowerPoint presentation that I walked the board through. Uh, to give some background on the neighborhood, the zoning, uh, the nature of the proposal, the relationship to the. Uh, adjoining buildings, some of the breakdown of the land uses on the block. Uh, including both sides of Sixth Avenue, um, the number of units on each block, uh, whether they were one-family. Uh, multifamily, uh, or otherwise, uh, et cetera, and, and provided some opinion at the last time I testified.
What I'd like you to do first, go through. The nature of the homes and the properties that we find in the immediate area, whether or not they're multifamily, single family, and how. A two-family, such as what is being proposed, fits in with the neighborhood scheme.
Uh, I had presented originally a tax map. I can show the board again, uh, but just to summarize. Just to summarize, the um, there are, the, the properties in an R-two zone on the, on the back half. Of, of the block that has, uh, that's divided between an R-three zone facing Sunset Avenue and the R-two zone facing Sixth. Um, and the zoning across the street on Sixth is also R-two. Um, on the, uh, on the block side, on the property side of, of the block. Um, there are apartment buildings along Sixth Avenue, even though it's an R-two zone. Um, there are immediately adjacent to the west. Our two-three-family houses, one sits on a forty-by-a-hundred-foot lot and one sits on a twenty-five-by-a-hundred-foot lot. Uh, so the, the, uh, and then on Webb Street, as you go around, uh, to that side of the block. Uh, the immediate, the, uh, a lot immediately to the south. Uh, is a fifty-by-a-hundred-foot lot that has three dwellings on it. Uh, I believe there's two one-families and a two-family. The two-family is in the rear, um, sort of, uh, perpendicular to the two one-families. Uh, those two one-families were referenced in, um, in Donna and Michael's report. There's a photograph of them. They have front porches that come out. Pretty close to the sidewalk on Webb. And then immediately to the south of that is the uh, portion of the. Uh, structures on the Esplanade condominium property. It's an L-shaped. Parcel that extends to Webb Street and the superintendent's unit, which is partially flat-roofed and partially uh pitched roof. Uh, fronts there, and then there, there's another property, which I believe has six apartments in it, uh, in a, uh, more of a traditional. Uh, uh, multifamily dwelling fronting on Sunset. Uh, then you have the Esplanade, uh, then you wrap around the block. There were two, uh, two or three one-families on Park that are on twenty-five-by-a-hundred-foot lots. Before you reach the, uh, the apartment building on the corner. So that's pretty much a summary of the. Uh, of the block verbally. Uh, if there's any questions about that, I can always put that graphic back up, uh, and with screen share.
Now, what about the size of the building that's being proposed for the particular lot? Um, in terms of planning-wise, whether or not it fits in with the area. Um, it's around a thousand square foot of, as you've heard, the footprint of the building. Um, that takes up, you know, not a significant amount, about thirty-four percent. Of a building coverage on this lot. Is that consistent with what you would find for this type of building or for a two-family structure?
Well, there's certainly examples of, um, lot coverage in that, uh, of the, of equivalent or greater. Uh, I made, I made reference to, uh, a couple of the other lots that were substandard, basically a, a typical standard lot. Uh, for a one- or a two-family house in Asbury Park is fifty-by-a-hundred. Um, it was, it was intended that way based on the fact that, uh, it's common. For one- and two-family houses historically to be on lots of that size, and fifty-by-a-hundred is. Pretty much the, uh, the most common lot size in the city. Uh, most of the city block grids were two-hundred-feet wide, so they lent themselves to. Hundred-foot depths with the lot, the blocks being divided down the middle, a hundred and a hundred on each side of the block. Um, a pretty standard, uh, grid pattern that was laid out. Uh, very similar to, uh, the Ocean Grove grid, except. Uh, the Kennedy surveyors that did that, uh, for James Bradley exploded out the grid. Um, there was a reference to that before, I think, by one of the members of the public to allow for the hundred-foot-wide. Uh, uh, East and West Boulevards that flare out to the ocean. So it's a pretty standard lot size, however. Over the years, many of these, uh, houses, uh, were constructed well before zoning. Um, zoning in Asbury Park, uh, actually came in after World War Two. Uh, so a number of the, uh, a number of the multifamily dwellings. Actually were converted during the war to provide housing for servicemen. Before there was any zoning and then the zoning was layered over the top of that. So you do. It define multifamily dwellings on lots that don't quite fit the fifty-by-a-hundred-foot mold is, is not uncommon, especially. On the one-way cross streets, uh, which are, um, have, have the, uh, the two, two sides, frontage on two sides where. Trying to meet that front yard on both sides becomes difficult. In this particular case, um, the lot, instead of being a corner lot of fifty-by-a-hundred is. Uh, thirty-five-by-a-hundred, it's the way that that lot has been historically. Uh, since the last time it was improved, I'm sure, uh, it must have had a dwelling on it at one point, um, but it was a very long time ago. Um, and most likely, many, in many times on the side streets. Uh, the, uh, the homes that were there, uh, did not have driveways because the lots in many times were very. Shallow fronting on those side streets. So. Uh, it, it, every block is a little different, um, in the city, which makes, which, what, what gives it some of its character. In this particular case, though, we were pretty much confined to a thirty-five, thirty-five-by-a-hundred. Lot, and really the only two options for it would either be a, a one-family house. Or a two-family house. Um, uh, for a one-family house. There would be variants required as well because you would require a fifty-by-a-hundred-foot lot for one family. The setbacks are basically the same. Um, so the, the constriction on the size of the house is pretty much the same in terms of the footprint. And we've been talking a, a lot about, uh, I've heard a lot this evening about. Uh, one-story versus, or a one-family versus two-family in terms of the size and so on. Um, it's, it's not uncommon for even a typical older. Style two-family where, uh, uh, the maybe one unit is on the first floor. Uh, or, and the second unit is on the, uh, second floor and the, the. Uh, the house is raised for a front porch. Many of the front porches have steps leading up to them. So the first floor is actually elevated and then underneath was a basement, many times with a. Uh, a coal or an oil furnace that needed some of that ceiling height. So that's pretty typical. Um, but in this case, the, uh, the, the footprint of a thousand square feet. Most likely would be effectively to be able to fit, uh, the garage was, the width was dictated by that. And then the setbacks, as I mentioned the last time around, if you were to apply them strictly to a thirty-five-foot lot. Would only leave you about nine feet of building envelope, uh, in order to comply. Also, with this, uh, particular proposed design, uh, the balconies are, are a main feature of it. Uh, and the setbacks have been, uh, measured to the balconies as, as opposed to strictly to the, to the walls of the footprint. So those. Those back, those balconies, I think, which I believe are four feet. Um, are, are a part of the reason for that, uh, the need for that setback relief. The, the lot size also, um, triggers both the floor ratio, well, for, it, it triggers the floor ratio issue. Um, I, I can provide the board with a little background, uh, because that, that, um. That, just so the, the board understands where that came from. Um, back in, when we did the first zoning ordinance, uh, in nineteen eighty-six and then, um, started doing some of the amendments thereafter. Uh, what we, we felt that there was a tendency, uh, in those, at that point in time. When, uh, when additions were added, things like decks and, uh, sheds and garages. Um, of many times in Asbury Park, the garages are detached, um, in the back of the lot, because the lots are relatively narrow and deep. Um, that we had no way to control how much, uh, that coverage could be. So. Uh, effectively, uh, I came up with the idea of twenty-five percent of a fifty-by-a-hundred-foot lot. Which would allow for a twelve-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot footprint. And if you double that, you'd have a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house and a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house was. Uh, seemed to be appropriate for a fifty-by-a-hundred-foot lot. In this case, when you apply those same standards to a thirty-five-by-a-hundred-foot lot. Um, it, it causes a problem in trying to fit a reasonably-sized footprint and a reasonably-sized home. Whether it's a two-and-a-half-story one-family or in this case, a two-story two-family with.
Now, when, when you're computing FAR, you don't include the garage. You just include the living space. Am I correct?
That's correct, but back in those, back when the, when these standards were written. But the, most of what we were dealing with in terms of infill was a, on a fifty-foot-wide lot, which allowed, or sometimes seventy-five-by-a-hundred, depending on, on the circumstances. Usually it's increments of twenty-five, so you get either twenty-five-by-a-hundred, fifty-by-a-hundred, or seventy-five-by-a-hundred in most cases. The thirty-five and forties-by-hundreds are relatively, uh, relatively unusual. Um, or atypical, but they are there. So, uh, normally what we would see in an infill development in many of these standards, some of the, the, the community design standards, for example. Were a result of a, a learning experience that we had with the city. When we did our first imbalanced housing infill development on the west side. Where we wanted to make sure that the, uh, that the buildings that we were, we were effectively giving away. City-owned vacant lots, uh, to a builder, and we wanted them to build according to our spec and we wanted the, the houses. To be, because we were getting a number of modular. One-story ranch houses turned sideways on a lot. So what you would see was the side of the house. Uh, and I, at that point, I remember, uh, being at the counter and effectively having to shame the builder into. Providing some kind of street presence to that house, uh, for people that might be buying it. We, we had control over that process because of the bid specs. What we did with the community design standards was attempt to have a little bit more control under the zoning, uh, in terms of infill and new construction on the. Uh, on the, uh, not only on the east side, but pretty much wherever we had, uh, one-family, uh, and the two-to-four-family zones. Uh, in particular. So that's some of the background as to how these standards came about. They've seemed to have survived, um, uh, since then. Uh, but the conditions at the time in the city were quite different, uh, than they are now. Uh, so, uh, effectively what you have, is, in my opinion, is it comes down to a choice. In terms of what's more appropriate for this lot in this location, given the fact that it's right across the street from the, uh. Uh, the, uh, the renewal area, the prime renewal area, where there's likely to be additional redevelopment as time goes on, especially now. That the city has had, uh, some success. Um, and seen, uh, some of the new redevelopment projects start to, um, uh, appear in different parts of the redevelopment area. Uh, the interface between the redevelopment area, the prime renewal area. And the rehab area, which is the infill and renovation area. Presents this kind of friction, and I think that's where, that's what makes this lot particularly unique. Uh, in that it's right on that corner. Um, and as I mentioned last time, in terms of impact on the zone plan and ordinance. I don't believe that this lot has that, uh, is going to have that kind of impact because of what's surrounding it. Uh, compared to perhaps a vacant lot, if there are any left. Um, in some of the center portions of the neighborhoods. Uh, especially between, I would say Sunset and Eighth or Sunset and Deal Lake Drive, where. Even though there's a blend of all kinds of housing styles, um, architectural styles. Building heights, apartments, et cetera. Uh, there's, you know, there's, there's definitely a critical mass of some of the older. Victorian homes or Queen Anne homes, some of the more substantial houses. That date back to the turn of the century. So they're all.
We find that in this particular location within this block, within the area where it's located.
Within the block, the, the, you don't have any of the, uh, of the classic larger homes. What you have are the, uh, more of the. The smaller wood frame, uh, dwellings, and there's really only. Uh, four of them, uh, two of them are on the same lot, um, um, as I mentioned on Webb Street, immediately adjacent. And closer to the street. Uh, and then the other two are multifamily dwellings that have been converted, um, over the years. They're grandfathered in. Uh, based on lot size, density, everything else, um, and that's pretty much it. Everything else. Uh, but I would say probably the closest dwelling to, uh, some of the more substantial ones that we find, um, on some of those other blocks. Block interiors is the one on the corner of Webb and Sunset, which is in a different zone. It's in the R-three. It's a, it's a multifamily converted house, but it's more substantial, has a more substantial front porch. Uh, has, has, has a lot more, um, probably a little bit more interest in terms of architectural features, but. Certainly the, that, that's the, and I would think probably the only other ones that I can think of that have that kind of. Style only in miniature would be the two-families on Park. They have, uh, they're, they're quite, uh, you know, quite attractive, quite unique. Uh, if you were going to try to, uh, put, uh, a, a design like that and, and a block of those types of units, I think. Uh, we would be having a different conversation tonight.
Now, the, for FAR purposes, the square footage, livable square footage for calculating the FAR. Um, is two thousand three hundred and twenty-nine square feet. Am I correct?
That's what I, I believe, I know it's been, it's been modified through a couple of revisions, but I believe that's the latest, uh, total.
Is that square footage consistent in terms of either one-family or two-family homes with what we find within the surrounding neighborhood?
Uh, I would say it's, it was, it is probably consistent. I doubt there's anything less than, I would think, less than maybe eighteen hundred if you were to add up. I didn't do an analysis of some of the smaller houses, but obviously the two single families that are on the same lot. Uh, that's, that's a fifty-by-a-hundred on Webb Street. Uh, if you were to look at each of them individually, they could be smaller than that. They might only be maybe. Uh, twelve-hundred square feet, something like that, I would guess, even though they're two stories. They have very narrow, uh, um, footprints. But you, in order to make them comparable, you'd almost have to add them together to get the same amount of square footage. And I would say, um, if, if you were to add up the four apartments. um, if you, if you were to add up the four apartments on the fifty-by-a-hundred next door, I'm sure you would end up with a lot more than twenty-two-hundred square feet.
In terms of the community design standards, you're familiar that they do apply to this particular lot. Am I correct?
Well, at the last hearing, I was, it wasn't, I don't think it was, we were sure. Um, and they were written, as I, I mentioned before, probably, I was, well, the community design standards that we're referring to in, in, uh, chapter thirty, um, section sixty-nine, sixty-nine, um, were added, uh, I would say, uh, probably within, within a year of the time. I, I, I wrote those right before I left. I left the city in, I believe in March of nineteen ninety-five. The land use element at, that is referenced in them was adopted in nineteen ninety-four.
But you're aware that there is an amendment that was more recent within a year or so to, or within a year or two, that made those standards applicable to this particular lot. Am I correct?
Well, I, yeah, that's what I think we've determined since the last hearing. Uh, there was some question as to whether they were applicable or whether the redevelopment plan standards were, uh, superseded them. And I think it's been determined that they are applicable. So that's why I'm back tonight, I believe.
And let's, let's, uh, if you can provide some testimony as to the variance relief that's being sought relative to the standards that apply.
Well, just in general, there, the standards are, are, were meant to, uh, deal with a number of, of situations as, because, because you have a variety of, uh, situations that come up in neighborhoods where you either have vacant lots or you have existing, um, dwellings that, uh, are, where there's applications or, uh, a desire to expand them. Um, and we were trying to keep the, um, keep there some frame of reference to that activity in some cases. So the standards deal with, and there's, there's two places that deal with effectively either vacant, it's referred to as vacant lots in one location under, uh, under sixty-nine-point-four, where it talks about new construction. And then there's, uh, sixty-nine-point-six, which deals with undeveloped lots. Pretty much everything else in the, and the standards have to do with additions, alterations, et cetera. And we even, I even had a what looked like pretty, uh, primitive attempts at, at illustrations now, um, twenty-seven years later. Uh, looking at them, they're still in the ordinance, uh, that I tried to do, uh, back in that, in that point to try to illustrate them. But the, the, for the, uh, for the, for the, the section of sixty-nine-point-four under new construction, basically what the intent was, was to incorporate, uh, architectural features that were, uh, uh, well, first of all, the first standard on building height was actually a, a, a minimum standard, not a maximum standard. And part of that, uh, dates back to what I mentioned before about the modular homes, plopped on a lot, turned sideways, um, which were very, uh, very unattractive, to say the least. Um, and it basically says that if you were to build a building on a vacant lot in any of the districts that were referenced earlier, which include the R-ones and R-twos, R-one-as and professional, professional office zones, uh, which have a lot of dwellings in those, uh, some of the older dwellings as well, that, um, that that it would have to have two stories. In other words, it couldn't have one story. It had to have two stories unless fifty percent or more of the, uh, existing homes on the same block facing the same street had less than two stories, which is relatively unusual in Asbury Park. There's very few neighborhoods that have that many one-story dwellings. So that was really a, an attempt to make sure that the, that the, that the new house on that lot was at least two stories. Uh, then the rest of it has to do with, uh, on, in terms of, um, new construction, has to do with the, let's see, uh, the, uh, had to do with, hold on. Um, massing, uh, which talked about, um, uh, variety of structural or ornamental indentations. That was, that was really meant to try to avoid a box, you know, as, plopping a box down on a lot. Um, we were, we were, uh, we were assuming that as you let, as you looked at the block front, which is the block facing, the, the lining up the houses, that you were going to have uh, a certain number of features that would be common to that block. Uh, some of the, some of the homes in Asbury were built during some, uh, they were all built in a very similar time period. Others were built later. Uh, the, for example, uh, anything, uh, between probably eighteen-eighty and nineteen-hundred would have been, uh, on a larger lot in particular, would have had maybe a, a turret or, uh, bay windows or other types of Palladium windows, things that were described in the, sort of the menu that was, that was written into the ordinance. So you would look to see that if, if fifty percent or more of the, of the dwellings on that block front exhibited those features and then it would be required on the new house on the vacant lot. Um, so that's, and, and the same thing goes with the roof treatments. So, and we, we illustrated a whole variety of, of different types of roof treatments.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Roberts, but we're at a point that we're going to have to bring you back. In order for me to be fair, as I told you, Mr. Karas, to the other applicant, um, this has gone on much longer than expected and we will not complete this in time. So, um, I, I, I expect that we will have to carry this, Mr. Roberts, because you, you know, we don't even have time to question you and as well as the public question you and our plant, and our own professional people. So if, Mr. Karas and Mr. Segal, if you're in agreement, I think I'm going to have to carry this.
Yeah, it, it's gonna, he has to finish up. We have questions from the board. I'm sure there's going to be questions that we're going to get from the public also. And I do understand you have another application you need to get to.
So, um, I'm going to say we can carry it to February ninth and, and pick up where Mr. Roberts was i- in his discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I apologize. I, I have, I come directly from a council meeting in Toms River. Um, so I wasn't aware that of the timeline that I would have tried to abbreviate, at least, uh, some tried to abbreviate the testimony.
Well, you'll have that chance next time.
Unfortunately, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, I have a, I am a commitment with, uh, exactly-
Then we're going to carry it to another time.
Okay. I just wanted to let you know February ninth is going to, uh, I have a prior engagement.
Okay. Uh, uh, then we'll carry it to February twenty-third.
That's true. I'm sorry. And I apologize for the inconvenience.
Okay. Dave, February twenty-third, you're good with?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, we would need a, a motion to, uh, carry. Uh, in addition to that, we would need the consent of the applicant to extend the time within which the board has to act under the MLUL.
So consented.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to carry three-hundred-sixth Avenue to February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, without further notice.
This is Russell Lewis, uh, seven P M. Yeah, this is Russell Lewis. I'll second.
Okay. Uh, let's see here. Let me write this down for one second here. Since I'm doing the secretarial duties, I have to write this stuff. And that would be February, what was the date again, Mr. Chairman?
Twenty-third.
I wish we could have.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm going to go ahead. I have the video up. I'm going to share my screen.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Uh, and the motion was made by Russell.
I'm here.
I made the motion and Russell seconded.
May.
And of course, the, the members of the public, uh, you won't be receiving any additional written notice. However, it will be posted on the city website as part of the agenda, uh, under the current rules and regulations and guidelines that we are operating under. So it will be noticed there, but you will not receive any further written notice by certified mail or the like. Okay. Uh, Daniel Harris. Dan, you're muted.
You're on mute.
Yes.
Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Wendy Glassman.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
Uh, Russell Lewis.
Yes.
And Christopher Avaloni.
Yes.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven. That would be seven votes. So that, those are the eligible members to vote on motions and the like. Uh, so the matter is carried without further notice till, uh, February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one.
Very good.
Thank you.
Everybody be well.
Thank you, Mr. Segal, Mr. Karas. Sorry, we couldn't finish up tonight.
Okay.
We'll get to it. We'll do it.
Get to it. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Good night all.
Good night.
Can we take a quick five-minute recess?
Yes, I will make a motion to take a five-minute, or actually ten-minute recess.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, we'll see you back here, everyone, at, uh, eight, uh, eight fifty-two. No later. Thanks.
And just to let everybody know that on this next application, um, I myself will be recused as well as Jill Potter and Wendy Glassman.
Okay, so I will be chairing. So those who are, um, on the next application, we'll see you back at, uh, well, at this point, it'll be eight fifty-three, no later, please. We'll see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great. Um, would you like to put us back on roll call?
Meeting back to order. We're going to call meeting back to order and the roll call will be as follows. Dan Harris.
Yeah.
Brittany Ashman.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Catherine Minavini.
Here.
Bonnie Knock.
Here.
And, uh, Russell Lewis.
Here.
Okay. Um, all right. Uh, the second application for this evening, which we have just about an hour, uh, to listen to is thirteen oh-two Madison, which was carried from December eighth, twenty twenty, without further notice. Um, the floor is yours.
Uh, can I interrupt for one second?
Sure.
I had to sign a, um, affidavit.
I'll get to that. Oh, yeah. Uh, Bonnie, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, Bonnie, can you, uh, hold that up so I can see it? If I can get you back up here? I'll take your word for it. Uh, you signed that already and that's correct?
I'll sign it right now.
Okay. Thank you. And, uh, you did, uh, review the tapes, the audio for March-
I listened to them yesterday and have lots of questions.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um-
Does everyone understand what this application is about?
Um, I'm, I'm the acting chairman and I got to say I kind of understand it, but I hope that it is clarified.
Okay, all right. Let me, let me, I, I was ill, uh, the night of this meeting, which is why I went crazy trying to find my notes and there weren't any.
I went crazy trying to find my notes today as well and I called, uh-
I know, but I don't think I'm that old just yet. So I went through the minutes and all the like. This, this, this essentially boils down to, I guess it initially started out as an appeal of, uh, the zoning officer's decision regarding whether or not the property is a non-conforming use and so on. Essentially, right now, it's an application to determine whether or not the property is a legally existing non-conforming use for two families plus the bulk, uh, bulk very, related bulk variances. And Mark, please step in if I'm mischaracterizing the application. Secondarily, in the event, the board determines that it is not a valid non-conforming use, uh, the applicant has requested in the alternative, a use variance and related variances, uh, for the project. Uh, at the last meeting, uh, Russell, you asked a number of questions, uh, and Mr. Sigmund, uh, who's in the lower left-hand corner, I assume, that's Matthew, correct?
May.
Uh, he answered some questions and was asked that he come back with more data, uh, to support the claim of the non-conforming use status. And I think that will, we pick up this evening. Is that a correct characterization of where we're at?
Except at the last meeting, if you recall, we had presented our engineer and planner who gave, uh, rather extensive testimony as to the use variance and the bulk variances. He put in the, uh, I believe the statutory requirements for the use variance and the bulk variances are existing conditions on the site.
Yes.
This site does not include any new construction, any expansion of the existing building. It's just to basically conform that it is a pre, pre-existing, non-conforming use because it's a two-family home in our opinion. And again, in the alternative, should that decision be to the negative made by the board, then we also put in testimony in the alternative for the use variance.
Who was your planner?
Uh, that was Mark, uh, Remo, R-E-M-O.
Okay.
Yeah, testified for about a half hour before the board.
Okay.
Okay, because if you recall, this was originally a site plan with an adjacent piece of property. We abandoned that and just decided to go with the, uh, updated project narrative just for the interpretation slash use variance in the alternative. So all that, all his testimony, uh, was heard by the board back, I think it was March or February last year.
Okay.
And I guess with COVID and everything else that's transpired in two thousand twenty, uh, time has flown by.
Okay. I believe you- What is the purpose of having to come back?
To come back because there were some questions raised by the board. One was, are there, what, what is the character of the neighborhood and other uses surrounding this property? Uh, we conducted a thorough Oprah investigation with the, with the records from the city and came up with about ten or twelve homes in the immediate vicinity. I mean, the same block and around the corner, which are all multifamily, pre-existing conditions, pre-existing uses. Um, Mr. Sigmund has this evening a map of all those properties and where they're located in relation to this property. There was also some issues regarding, uh, how a second electric meter was installed in this property because I think there were some Google Maps presented, I believe by the town engineer, uh, some showing that there was one, one meter versus two. And we were able to find out again through the Oprah requirements that a permit was actually sought by the current owner for the second meter because they decided to make this a more efficient two-family. Uh, they would have separate meters, one for each of the tenants. And one of our exhibits, which we have this evening, I'm not sure how you pulled the exhibits up that were submitted electronically, but we have the actual permit application filed by the Sigmund Companies for the second meter. So we wanted to address that as well, not like it just mysteriously, uh, appeared one day into the, uh, the property.
Okay. Donna Miller. You're muted.
Hello.
I'd like to get you sworn. Salmo swear, testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Will you state your name for the record and tell us your affiliation with the board?
Donna Miller, board planner.
You were in attendance at that March meeting? Because I see the note in the minutes that it-
I was, and honestly, I was just listening to Mr. Brightman's recap and I'm thinking to myself, wait, is that that application? Oh, wait, yes, wait.
No, that's fine. Okay.
A lifetime ago.
All right, Mark, why don't you proceed and let's get rolling.
All right. So, uh, the first thing I would like to address, uh, and have Mr. Sigmund sworn in, please, as my witness for this evening.
Yes, Mr. Sigmund, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear, testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
You state your name for the record and spell it.
Matthew Sigmund, M-A-T-T-H-E-W-S-I-G-M-A-N.
Okay. And your affiliation with the applicant?
I am the applicant.
You're, you're a principal in the app, it's an LLC, you're a principal, correct?
Okay, go ahead. It's yours.
And you're familiar with this piece of property, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, just for the board's benefit, if you just recap basically your testimony last time as far as your, uh, the nature of the property, what it's been used for.
Yeah. So first and foremost, I don't want to keep everybody here that much later. I want to make this as quick as possible. Um, you know, last time we did, I did a video. I don't know if anybody wants to see it again or if everybody saw it, that would be okay. Um, if anybody wants, just raise their hand. I could share my screen and show it. I basically gave the layout of the existing structure, the way it is today, which is the same way it was when I bought it. Um, basically, I bought a two-family house, um, at thirteen oh-two Madison Avenue in Asbury Park, New Jersey. Um, it was, it's two units. It was always two units when I bought it. Um, you know, and we've been renting it as such. For whatever happened, somehow zoning basically said, you know, we don't have this as a two-family, please return it to a single-family structure. And that's when this sort of all started. Um, that, 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 that's, that's kind of where we are in a nutshell. So, Mark, if you want to ask me questions, we could, you know, go through.
All right. I, I believe was Miss Miller brought up, uh, the question about the two electrical meters. And I want to call your attention to, uh, Jack, forgive me, I'm not sure how these exhibits were marked, but they were all-
I don't know either, so.
They were all submitted, they were submitted electronically.
All right. So they were, they were previously marked?
Yeah, there, there were submitted, no, they were submitted to Irina's office electronically and she somehow put it into the system.
That's fine. Well, so they're in there, but you can refer to them however you please.
Sure thing. No problem. All right. The, the first exhibit that we're going to address is a construction permit that was issued by Asbury Park on, uh, March first, two thousand sixteen. And, uh, that's a, uh, for electrical meter setup, unit two upstairs.
Correct.
Okay. And your company applied for that permit?
Yeah. And I, I mean, I could share my screen if anybody needs- Yeah, and I mean, I could share my screen if anybody needs it, but basically, it's just a construction permit with electrical. The construction department's acknowledging for the unit two upstairs and we got a second electrical meter. I remember there was a back and forth with that at the preliminary hearing.
And that's why when you drive past the site, you see two meters on the side of the building, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, because it was split by you with the permit.
Correct.
I know that was.
Can you actually, can you share your screen?
Yeah, I think, I think it would be good to share it if we can.
Yeah.
All right, let me see if, let me see if I can do that, Mark, let me handle that.
You're more sophisticated than I am when it comes to these things.
I wouldn't call it that, but.
I can hold it up.
Did that work?
Yeah, you got it, there you go, wow. Everybody, everybody see that?
Yeah.
Can you zoom in a little bit? Yeah, perfect.
Okay, and you'll see the, Matt, go up a little bit, please? And it says the work site is thirteen oh two Madison Avenue, which is a subject property. And it's for the electrical, if you look down to the left, it says meter set, unit two upstairs. So that's for the second meter that's at the property.
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions with this?
You might as well keep that up, it'd be probably easier, because we're gonna go through the next exhibit. Now, while you own the property, did you place tenants in the property?
Yes.
And did you obtain, apply for a certificates of occupancy for those tenants?
Yes.
And if you could scroll down to the next exhibit, please?
Sixteen and seventeen C O O for occupancy for the subject property. CO number one is for number, unit one, and then this is for unit two.
Okay, and number of units of the structure is noted as two units?
Two here, two here.
Okay, and those were issued by the building, by the CO Department of Housing Inspector of Asbury Park, correct?
Correct.
Hold on, before you change it, I just want to read it.
Sure, go ahead.
And then let me know when you want me to scroll.
Please.
That's a yes, right?
Jack, these may have been exhibited, introduced the first time too, I'm not sure, so I figured I'd bring them up again.
Okay.
Right?
Correct.
How do you want to mark these, Jack?
You know what, let's just mark them, how many, about how many exhibits did you have, we'll go AA, we'll give it in. So even if we go at AA one, we'll know it's a separate document.
Well, I think the package is like forty or fifty pages, if you want to mark the whole package.
Yeah, mark the package as AA number one.
Okay.
And then this way we'll be able to distinguish it between the other.
I think I have, I could see the exhibits, this, I pulled something up from, that was emailed to us and it has all the exhibit numbers, it's dated twelve eight twenty.
Yes, I, I sent everything to Irina's office as separate exhibits, but it said, part of my lack of knowledge when it comes to some technology, I'm not sure how it gets from her office onto the, onto the screen, at a Zoom meeting.
Okay, well, we're just, thanks Catherine, but, okay, well, let's go with, we'll make it AA one, just, just to make sure. And we will, we'll be able to distinguish, okay.
All right, Mr. Sigmund, did you have the opportunity to investigate other properties in the general vicinity of this property?
Yes, I did.
And have you been able to determine what the use of those properties are?
Yes, we have, and we, oh, let me go back to this, whoa, this menu came down. Yes, and I believe that is in our next, well, we have, this is the property record card, Mark, if we want to go through that first.
All right, okay, all right, this is, this is a property record card that came from the Oprah request from Asbury Park, correct?
Correct.
And that's, this is the subject property?
Yes, it is.
And it's noted on there that this is a multi-family structure, is that correct?
Correct, my cursor's on it, I don't know what you guys are seeing, and I'm sorry to break your necks this late, but it says multi-family here. And then it just does show that it has two kitchens, which is an indication of two units because it could have two bathrooms, but I mean, most houses that are two families would show, you know, every apartment has a kitchen. And this does depict two kitchens.
And this came from the records of Asbury Park, correct?
This is the public records of Asbury Park, correct, and it's right here, it says two kitchens.
Can you scroll up a little bit so I can read the left border, or actually, what would be the top of the page?
Keep going, are you, tell me when.
Yeah, go a little further up. Okay, thanks, okay.
Okay.
Members of the board, can you see that, understand it, have any questions?
Is there a date on this?
That's what I'm looking for.
Looks like.
It's.
Twenty?
Yeah, there's a date on what would be the bottom of this page.
Um, right there.
Yeah, one six twenty.
There you go, yep.
Well, that would, that would be the date I received it.
Right, that's your, what, your fax date?
It probably is, that's probably the date we received it from the town. Because I made the Oprah request after our first meeting.
All right.
Then when was the date of this actually conducted?
The Oprah request was done in June of last year, so this could have been dated January two thousand twenty.
I could pull this up right now if anybody wanted to from public records, it's, it's the same thing.
Yeah, if you go on NJACTV.org, it's there, just from my, my experience with this, and I have a lot of experience with it, these are updated when they do revales in the town.
Correct.
Typically, I'm not saying this was, I'm not really sure about Asbury Park, but typically, that's when these tax records get updated is when, so when was the last revale in Asbury?
Well, I mean, the revale, Asbury gets reviled, I believe, because it's Monmouth County, it's annually, and different segments of the city get evaluated. I think this past year was the northeast quadrant, I believe, so they, they don't go around every year to every single home, it's different segments.
So basically, it's probably within the past six or seven years.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, since my purchase, absolutely.
But again, it was a two-family when you purchased it?
Absolutely.
I have a question, because I, I pulled the MLS listing, the original one, from when you bought the property. And it says it was advertised as a single family.
It's funny, Tim, I, I saw that also in one earlier, it says it's set up as a mother-daughter, which is typically for use of multi-general, multi-generational living, not so much for rentals.
I don't know how much stock you could put into the MLS, alls I know is we have COs for two separate families living in the building.
Right, but if, if Mr. Sigmund purchased the property as a two-family, what made him think it was a two-family when the listing says single family? Other than the two units, because you can have two units as a mother-daughter setup.
Well, you probably wouldn't have two separate COs then.
Right, I, I, I agree, there's a complete.
There's a disconnect, there's a disconnect between information overall.
And it happens all the time, I see this all the time, so it's not unusual when zoning and building don't, don't communicate with each other.
Yeah, and that loophole has apparently been fixed, that the COs do check the zoning now.
Yeah, the City of Asbury Park, I think, actually has a new SDL portal infrastructure system, which is like, everything's linked. So I think going forward, a lot of this information will all be digital and, you know, files will all be, you know, streamlined, so on and so forth.
What, when were those COs from that you just showed us?
Two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen.
Okay, thanks.
And they're for two distinct units?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't recall, okay. May I ask a question?
Sure.
When you purchased the property, did you get a transfer of title?
I don't believe I did at the time, no.
You didn't?
No.
Okay.
Jack, well, can you be more specific, doesn't everyone do a transfer of title at a purchase?
In, in Asbury Park, when you transfer a residential property, you're required to get a T O T, transfer of title. And on that transfer of title, it will typically tell you what you're, what's being conveyed, single family, two-family, three-family, et cetera. But it's an ordinance that.
Sorry, this is Donna, this is also particularly important when it's not an owner-occupied unit. Anytime there's a rental, that was why the whole system was set up.
Yeah, so there's. Requirement.
Right.
Did you purchase this at a foreclosure sale or arms-length?
Yeah, I don't believe it was through, I don't believe I was the purchaser through MLS, not that I recall.
No, that's not your question. Did you buy this from the property owner, or did you bid on this at a sheriff's sale?
It was through the property, it was through the property owner who was, I think, like an executrix or something like that, I don't believe it was.
So it was an individual estate, it was an individual transfer to an individual. You didn't go in and bid it in at a sheriff's sale from foreclosure or something like that?
I don't believe it was done that way, no.
Okay, okay. All right, continue, please.
All right, so that's the property record card, and then here's.
Now, for this, so we did, we did some investigation as to the suitability of this as a two-family and we went into the Oprah records again from Asbury Park. And we found that a good number of houses in the immediate vicinity are two-families by reason of pre-existing uses, being non-conforming. And these, these are the properties that we found to exist, and Matt will go through those.
What did you find for this property, I'm more concerned about.
Actually, for this property, we did not find a certificate at all, or any determination. The only thing we found as far as this property goes is the property record card, which we just went over.
Did you discover any old tax records to see how it was assessed, let's say, ten, fifteen years ago?
Well, I spoke to the town, apparently, there's, there's a big gap in your records because of a flood or a fire.
Okay.
I forget which one it was, but a great deal of records no longer exist.
Also, I can't, I can't see who's talking, I believe it's Mr. Serpico. When you get a property record card, at least through the channels that I do online at the O P R S site, it only shows the most current one. It, it doesn't show historical property record cards, at least, I don't know, that's through my channel, I don't know of others.
Matthew, when did you, this is Russell, when did you purchase this property?
I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Approximately.
Uh, it's two thousand twenty, maybe five years ago, something.
I see the transfer date is six twenty-three, twenty fifteen, is that right?
That was pretty close.
And are we, as a board, able to see the MLS since it's been brought into testimony?
I could share my screen.
Is that appropriate, Jack?
Sure, but, you know, the value of it is, is, is what it is, but yeah, I, as long as it's an official document, it can be.
I don't, I don't know if an MLS is an official document, you know, it's somebody's opinion, a realtor's opinion and a realtor's attempt to sell a piece of property and putting information in there, that's not, if you look at the bottom, it's, it's believed to be true but not deemed to be reliable.
Okay, did you purchase this through a realtor?
I don't recall off the top of my head, I, unfortunately, I. Yeah, I, I, I buy a lot of property and I don't recall this, this, the way this one transacted, and it was a while ago, I don't recall.
You have a contract for sale for this property? That you purchased it?
Not that I have access to, no.
You don't have the contract for sale of a property that you purchased five, six years ago?
I don't have it.
Where is it?
I, I don't have it, I didn't, I didn't keep the records for that, I, I don't have it, it's not, it's not. I didn't use an attorney for this, I don't, I don't use attorneys when I close.
So, I'm sorry, Jack, can I interrupt for one second? The MLS listing says the selling member in the MLS was Matthew Sigmund.
That sounds like me. I think I'm Matthew Sigmund, so that would be me.
Right.
You ever list this property?
I didn't list the property, no.
So you bought it through the MLS, you were saying you didn't buy it through the MLS, but it appears you did, because it says, unless you sold it to somebody else and then bought it, but that wouldn't make sense, because this selling date on this says nine twenty-one, twenty fifteen.
Right, so that would be the date of the, of the purchase, so then I, yeah, then I represented myself as the buyer, correct?
Is it, does it list him as the seller or the buyer?
No, no, listen as the selling member, meaning he was the agent that brought in the buyer, but he's saying he was the agent who brought, he, he was the buyer and the agent, he was.
I represent myself, exactly.
So you brought in yourself and then you sold it to yourself, but you have no recollection of it? This seems really weird.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a strange property and that's why we're here.
You gotta tell us.
I get you buy a lot of property, but I mean, it's not like this is twenty years ago.
No, it's not, I mean, I, I bought the property and I bought it as, you know, a, a two-family, I, it was two units, I got two COs for it and I'm here to get it to be a two-family, I mean, that, that's why I'm here, if I, if I didn't have this issue, this would be a non-issue, I mean, that's.
Well, no, you have two things you're looking for, one, you want a declaration of a non-conforming use.
Correct.
And in the alternative, if that's denied, you want a use variance.
Correct.
Right? And bulk variances. Okay, so it's just, it's not that simple, we, we, you, we gotta go through the steps to find out. Your, your burden of proof is to prove to us, A, you gotta prove the validity of the non-conforming use. And you can establish a non-conforming use in one or possibly two ways. One, that it was a pre-existing non-conforming use when the zoning ordinance was amended, making this a non-conforming use, which, go back to property records, and two, if you got a use variance.
Jack.
I'm sorry?
This is Donna, this, there's an important classification, clarification there, not that it was an existing non-conforming use, but a legal.
I said legal non-conforming.
Been, you know.
It has to be established that it was a pre-existing, it was permitted under the prior, at some point under the ordinance, and then it was converted, then the ordinance was changed, making it a non-conforming use. That's what I, that's, if I didn't say that, that's what I meant to say.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, or the only other way you can get that is status, you're not really a non-conforming use if you get a use variance, because then you're essentially a permitted use, because you got a variance. But in order to establish the satisfaction of the board, you gotta, you gotta show them that some history that proves that this was a valid non-conforming use more than just, not just five years ago, prior to that time, we, we had to, when we started non-conforming use applications, which we have very, very many of them over the years, we established a policy that we recognized that the city's records weren't the greatest and that people probably did not have records going back prior to nineteen ninety. And we looked at the last time when we started this whole procedure, a number of years ago, before redevelopment really kicked off, we found that the last major overhaul of the zoning ordinance of the city was back in, I think, in nineteen eighty-eight and Donna would know better because she was the zoning officer back then. So we said, if you can show us back at that point in time that you had a, you know, two-family, you know, one-family, a three-family and a two-family, we would accept that as the start date moving forward. And typically, what's done is come in with utility bills, you come in with all tax records, you come in with code enforcement records, your, your contract to sale when you purchased might say if it was a one or two-family, if you had, I'm sure you had a contract when you purchased the property, you may not have used an attorney, but you'd have to have a contract. And typically, and, and you, unknowingly, you, you have an ordinance violation, you're required to get a transfer of title on transfer of title to a piece of real estate in the City of Asbury Park. And you didn't do that.
I, but I, 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 I'm sorry to interrupt you, I, I must have a T O T, I didn't submit that as evidence because the city would not give me a C O O without the proper transfer of title.
Right, so then you must have that somewhere.
Correct, I, I could certainly look for that, I don't, I don't, I don't have that privy, I didn't bring that up.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna need it, because you're giving us information that's five years old, but that's not gonna, that doesn't, so far, there isn't much here to look at, we gotta see what you did and how you, how it arrived at. Not saying you're not gonna prove your case, but you, you gotta give us some more.
Understood.
How many meters on that house?
I believe there's two electrical meters.
Okay.
You can go to the utility, you can go to JCP and L and find out their records when those two were installed.
No, we have, we have the second meter, the second meter was installed, we have a permit for that.
So then this was a two-family operating off of one electrical meter?
Correct.
Jack, part of his, the previous meeting's testimony, I think the original first meeting's testimony, because they had shown us some, some videos, some pictures of the house, and we had seen street view where there's actually a view of the house with one meter, and then after a period of time, there's a view of the house with two meters.
Okay.
Again, it's this kind of, what I think has happened is before Mr. Sigmund bought the property, it was either an illegal conversion or sort of a, you know, incidental mother-daughter, where there are these two dwelling units, maybe they weren't completely separated, but there were two actual kitchens, I'm, I'm looking at the, the tax assessment records that we had gotten. And I'm not sure if this is exactly the same as what Mr. Sigmund is showing you, but, you know, in, in. and I'm not sure if this is exactly the same as what Mr. Sigmund showed me, but you know, in, in 2013 and 2014, the assessment is as a single-family dwelling. And then after that, it's a two-family dwelling, so all of these pieces say, you know, yes, there was a change around the time that Mr. Sigmund became involved with the property. We're not saying he did it, we're not saying the original owner did it, maybe there was a trustee that was involved as part of this incidental sort of, you know, two households sharing the structure, um, and then a formalization of it as a two-family house. But yeah, there are no zoning records that affirm permission to create a two-family house. There's no zoning application, there's no zoning permit, this is all recent history, this isn't like 1988.
So you actually have a tax assessor's record?
Um, I'm looking right at it, the revale date is October 1st, 2014, it says, uh, and number of units, one, exterior condition normal, gas heat describes the various, you know, floors and what's in them, the size of the rooms. Uh, the one before that is 2013, number of units, one, you know, same general information.
Okay.
What's the one after this? 2017 is the next, uh, card, and that's where all of a sudden it's, number of units is two.
Mr. Brighton, you're aware, have you seen these records?
No, we, we made an Oprah request for all the records and they, they never sent us, the only thing they sent us is the one that we just marked.
Where, Donna, where did you get that from?
This city, city assessor. This is, this is part of the package that we got from the city for our review.
Then that must be what you submitted to the city.
I didn't submit it, no.
No, it's not, it's not part of his application, this was records that, um, Mark Siegel, Michelle Alonzo, you know, they send additional information so that we can know the history of the property.
And you made an Oprah request, you should have received copies of it.
Yeah, you should have gotten this if you made an Oprah request, this is part of the.
I made a full block, I made three Oprah requests.
Okay. Are you gonna, I think you're gonna need to look at this?
Yes.
I can, um.
Yeah, I think you need to see this entire package, you're entitled to see it? To prepare your case?
Yeah, because I'm, I'm surprised I don't have it, because I asked for everything multiple times, we were having trouble receiving documents because of COVID, because people weren't working in the office.
It's a mess, it's a mess.
And, you know, and I, I feel like, you know, we should have these things, because we could address a lot of these issues.
I think you need to, I think you need to get this packet, and you need to sift through it, because you may have some records that may contradict what you're claiming.
I mean, nothing I've seen helps his case for the pre-existing.
I, I, in all fairness to the applicant, I think they need to take a look at that. I would also look, and Mr. Brightman will give you better advice than me, because he's your attorney, but better look at your contract for purchase of this property. See what it says. And I think based on what it says, Mr. Brightman may be giving you some advice.
Are we still able to proceed with the other non-conforming uses in the area?
No, the non-conforming uses in the area are irrelevant to your non-conforming.
Completely.
Well, they're, they're relevant to the, uh.
Use variance application, but did your, did your, did, did your planner opine about the positive and negative criteria at the last meeting?
I believe he did.
He did.
Donna, does anybody recollect all of that, because I wasn't there?
I think, I think, I think the, uh, where we left off with our planner was, uh, I think there was some concern that he didn't cite any examples of other non-conforming uses in the area, and that's why we went back to look at the surrounding properties.
Right, he, he, his map was on like a piece of paper and it was highlighted, and the board just kinda was like, this isn't acceptable. And that's why at this meeting, we basically went, I created a map on one of the tabs on my, of the internet, and I could show all the houses that, that are not conforming, uh, within the vicinity.
And that's why we have all these additional documentation to show that the surrounding homes, I think there's like 10 of them here, are all, uh, two families or multiple families.
Okay, so, just a quick question, um, sorry, this is Bonnie, um, did you do any work to the house after you bought it?
The electrical meter.
Because the MLS said, said it would be perfect for a 203K, so for, basically it means that it, it needs rehab. So, I, I'm a little confused.
So, I mean, what, what we do is work, it will, different projects require different work. This project wasn't in bad shape, and I mean, it's still not in great shape right now, like if we were to do something, we'd probably maybe gut renovate it, but we got it ready for CO, is what we basically did. The bathroom on the first floor is old, the bathroom on the second floor is old, the kitchens are old, um, a lot, a lot, I mean, you know, I, I mean, I, again, that's, that's, that's someone else's opinion of it, I mean, I've never.
No, I, I agree, I, I.
I've never, I mean, I've done a lot of fixer-uppers that we hold and sell, and I've never used that financing instrument before.
No, I know you didn't, but, but it's, you know, when, when, when a realtor puts out a listing, it pretty much means it's, it's not in great shape.
No, it wasn't in great shape, we got it ready for, we got it ready for CO, that's all.
Well, let's, let's talk about procedure then. Right now, you've got a, you're, you're requesting one or the other relief, okay? The first one, we got a tax assessor's record that indicates that you haven't seen, unfortunately, that the property was used as a single-family residence, according to the tax assessor, prior, in or about 2014, possibly before. Do you want to continue to proceed with the declaration of non-conforming use application? Or do you want to proceed on the, uh, use variance application? Or do you want to take a look at what's there before you would decide which direction you want the board to go with, your, your file?
I mean, frankly.
No, no, I'm asking your attorney.
Oh.
Your attorney.
It, it seems like most of the board members don't remember the testimony from last year, which I, I could understand. Uh, you may have to review the testimony to move forward.
Yeah, I, I think, unless the board members, please, I'm, I'm not taking your place, I'd never interject my position in your position. However, from a legal perspective, A, I think the applicant, you got a tough road to go down to establish the non-conforming use, and you don't seem to have the documents that you requested, we do, so you should have them. Then you would make a determination based on what you see there and on your contract to purchase and a few other things, whether or not you want to proceed with the non-conforming use declaration. Insofar as the second form of relief, the board has to have a recollection of the testimony and the facts that were before it almost a year ago, and if it would be smart for the board to watch that video, uh, and, and get that testimony to be fresh again.
Well, and I'm sorry, this is Donna, Jack, just to supplement that, Mr. Sigmund was saying they were gonna present some evidence tonight pertaining to existing land use patterns, whatever. They'd have to bring back their planner, you know, they can't just provide that and rely on the planner's past testimony, they, they need to bring their planner back and testify how, you know, that satisfies the positive and negative.
Believe he testified as a positive, negative, I think it was just additional.
Not on the new evidence, you can't just bring in new evidence and say, see, now it satisfies what our planner said before.
No, I think he presented, I think he presented a map, and as Matt said, it, it wasn't the most elaborate map as far as the multiple use family, these are more details as to those properties.
Right, but it's a different, you can't.
It's the same, it's the same.
To new evidence.
I remember the video, I remember the conversation around the electrical meters, but there's still this whole gray area as to, you know, some of the paperwork and purchasing, it's like, I'm not saying that there weren't two electrical meters there before, but you put them in after you purchased, there's just like this very fuzzy kind of what seems like a period of time. And it just seems like if we could, if you could fill in those gaps, we, you know, we could make it better.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I, I'm trying to present this best as possible, um.
I think my recommendation makes the most sense.
Yeah.
Mr. Brighton, you have, you have, you have any objection to that?
No.
Okay, so I, I would think.
I like to do this once, at least one more.
Yeah, yeah, and, and the prudent thing to do is for, A, you gotta get your proofs together for your first request, for your, your, your initial relief, your first step, which is the non-conforming use. You may very well determine you don't have the proofs, and you'll come back and tell us that, and you'll say, look, we're gonna go for a use variance, or we'll come back and say, we've got proofs that'll show that we got a valid non-conforming use, we make a decision, we move on, and the case is over. But you gotta see the documentation first, and I think all of us have to look, review, re-review that hearing, uh, transcript, video, what have you, from almost a year ago, so that the testimony of your planner is fresh in people's minds as the justification to grant the use and related bulk variances, the fact that you may, somebody asked you to bring in some collateral information regarding other, uh, non-conforming uses in the area, it's, the weight afforded to that is, is not that great, more, it's, as you know, it's positive and negative criteria for the variance, and, uh, that, and that's what's gonna carry the day for you if we proceed on a use and bulk variance application. That's my, I, I recommend that we carry it, we move it to a date certain, you, look at your documents, you better find your file when you purchased.
That's a problem.
Yeah, that's good, okay, and then you can discuss the contents of it with Mr. Brightman, and then he can advise, so advise you what to do. But, and I think we should, we'll get you those documents that we were referring to, that you don't seem to have, um, so that he can better prepare his case, and we can be more familiar with the file and the testimony of the planner. But it may very well be, I don't know that, until after I listen to that tape, uh, or hear it, whatever it is, and the other members hear it, you may very well need to bring back your planner, I have no clue, uh, because I haven't, I haven't reviewed the record.
Yeah, I gotta fire him, actually, um, that's why he's not here, and I didn't know, I didn't feel he was necessary, because he showed up late and gave this flimsy piece of paper, and it was just completely unprofessional, so I got rid of him.
Gave a flimsy piece of paper to the board?
Yeah, he literally held, he came late and was like, here's my map, and the board was like, no, and he was all this.
I, I, you're not my client, but what I think you got to do is you gotta talk to Mr. Brightman, and he will tell you what you should do, and you should probably heed his advice.
You got it.
Tells you to get a planner, and he tells you to get a good one, get a good planner.
Thank you, we need to see leases and certificates of occupancy.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Dan.
We need to see leases and certificates of occupancy.
Well, the certificates of occupancy, if we can find more records, since there seems to be more, maybe there are other COs in the file.
Um, leases will be supplied on his part, though, right, on Sigmund's?
Well, what's this, I just saw zoning certificate compliance.
That's a different, that's a different property.
These are the maps that we were to go through.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
If we have leases or certificate of occupancy that can show us partially how it's used.
Yeah, I mean, it's more evidence that could help support your case for the.
Yeah, I have leases that go along, I mean, these are, there's these COs, I have, I have, I have leases that go along with this, absolutely.
Yeah, but these COs only established these two units as of 17. You gotta go back much farther than 17.
I'm not, I'm not gonna find anything, I mean, like I said, it was sold by an executrix, I mean, which basically.
All right, well, that, you're gonna find something that we're gonna give you, we're gonna give you a tax assessor's records that may show something different, and that's what I'm saying, you gotta talk to Mr. Brightman after he analyzes the file, and he'll tell you where he thinks you stand.
Understood.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, would we like to pick another date?
Yeah.
Uh, I believe we have February 23rd or March 9th available.
23rd should be good.
23rd, we'll be okay, we'll be ready.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Is, is the city open for physical inspection of records?
That I can't tell you.
I don't think so, then I'll.
As I said, you know, we, we asked for, on the Oprah request, all COs, all tax records, everything else, and they weren't even able to furnish the COs that we just presented, there's just like, I'm, I'm not sure why we're not getting the documents we're asking for. That's why if we were able to get into the town records and look through ourselves, it'd probably be easier.
Mr. Brightman, I have just emailed you.
Yes, I got it, thank you, Donna.
Those assessment records.
I sent it over to my client.
Yeah, at least with things being digital, I mean, if the city's gonna provide stuff to their professionals, it should just be on a portal that everyone can access. I mean, if we're gonna go digital, it's, it's easy to do that, and then, I mean, it sounds like we're gonna end this, my closing other statement would be, I mean, I find it, you know, because I'm gonna be before this board again, zoning and planning, I mean, it's difficult to even get something passed with this limited amount of board seat people here present, because everyone, you know, other people, uh, you know, recuse themselves for different, different reasons, you know, that's, that's, that's difficult. I mean, I, I think that you're on a board to be unbiased as a, as a, as a member of the community, um, and to just recuse yourself, because, you know, you happen to know me or my family.
That's a conflict of interest. Let's speak to your attorney about that, okay? Our obligation is to provide you for a use variance, five members. We don't have to provide by law seven members, we only have to provide five. We try to accommodate people to provide as many members as we can, so that you can afford to get a couple of negative votes. But if we only have five, and that's all we have, you gotta proceed, and conflicts are conflicts. You can't have next-door neighbors, and you can't have people that are friends with you sit on your application. You can't.
Okay.
Doesn't work that way, doesn't work that way.
Understood.
Let's, let's have a motion, if we don't mind, to move it to another date, certain time and place.
Um, this is Russell Lewis, I'll make a motion to, uh, move this application to February 23rd of 2021, uh, without further notice.
Okay, and I'm gonna need the consent of the applicant, since we are, you are requesting in the alternative a use variance other than a non-conforming use, to extend any time within which the board has to operate under the MLU.
So approved.
Okay, all right, so.
And I'll second, Russell.
Thank you.
Members of the public who might be listening, uh, the matter's gonna be presented before the board on 23rd of February at 7:00 PM, or whatever, whatever listed is, wherever it's listed on the agenda for that evening. The board in the interim is going to review the transcripts of the prior meeting almost a year ago. The applicant's gonna receive additional documents that we have in our possession, and they're gonna come back, and we're gonna regroup and do this again.
We get that listing agreement that was referred to a few moments ago?
Yes, you should get everything.
Okay, because I.
Bonnie, can you email that to some, somebody, me or somebody, we can get it over to, uh.
Email the listing?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sure Matthew.
I wanna get it to Mr. Brightman.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll do that as soon as we hang up from.
Okay.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Yeah, and I, I would like to review the previous meeting, and I would encourage all board members to do that, uh, as well.
I have the link for it, because I listened to it yesterday, so I'll, I'll refer it.
That would be great.
Send it to me as well, because I need to.
Yeah, it was, uh, from last March. I wasn't even on the board yet.
It was the first meeting of March, which was our last in-person meeting.
Right. I'm trying to find it online, and I.
It was March, whatever the first meeting was in March.
March 3rd? Because it says it was carried from December 8th, 2020, but it doesn't give the original on our agenda.
The original date was March 3rd of 20, that's the night of that hearing, I was sick, Kevin Kennedy sat in for me.
I remember, can you just forward it to our board members?
Yeah, that'd be great if you can forward it to us.
Yeah, I'll go to it.
Great, thank you. And it has, it, it does have the video included in that, correct?
That I don't know.
I don't think so.
You didn't see the video, you, you were at the, you were at the meeting.
I was, yeah, I think he showed it on, well, was this in person?
Yeah, no, it was on my phone, and I think I hooked it in through Irene, I have it digital, I can always email it or share on Dropbox or something like that.
We have to get the official, we can have, we have to listen to the official transcript of the meeting. So whatever Bonnie received from.
Mark Siegel has a copy.
Your office, that's what we have to.
Yeah, I think they do.
It's coming now, it was, uh, 3, 3, 3, March 3rd was the date of the meeting.
Yeah, okay, uh, any questions on, on this, from anyone? Okay, can we have a motion?
To.
Adjourn it to the 27th?
Oh, will we do now vote on?
I, I had the motion, and Brittany seconded. To the 23rd.
Uh, Russell Lewis, I'll be so glad when Irene comes back. I'm just not good at this sort of thing.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Devin, okay, uh, 21, okay, Dan Harris?
Yes.
Yes, Brittany Ashman?
Yes.
Tim Slick?
Yes.
Catherine Minervini?
Yes.
Bonnie Knock?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, matter is carried, adjourned till the 27th of, uh, February.
Sounds good, thank you, gentlemen.
27th to 23rd.
23rd. 23rd?
23rd of February.
Is it 23rd?
I'm sorry, my error.
Okay, no problem.
23rd of February, 2021.
23rd, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Uh, do we have any other matters or can I, uh, make a motion? Okay, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Good night, y'all.
Any calls? None. Eyes happy. Thank you, everyone.
Night.